Hey. Still on the road for this TV? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Show them how to do it. Yeah, I put me through the process. Well, yeah, no, yeah. Hang on. Okay. We're good. Thanks. All right. Morning, you all going? Please join me in the process.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and all.
Morning, Eric. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Am I busy for you?
I did. Are you ready for me?
I am ready for you.
He's our... He's looking on.
Bouncing up there.
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. Kind of give you a rundown of where we're at and where we're trying to go right now. Have the pothole patcher out running. We've made it down Maple. We've got a little bit more work to do on Maple. We've been on Jayhawk. Should finish it up today. We had a little mechanical issue with it Friday, but we feel we got that back up and going. Finished Jayhawk and then gonna head out in the northeast or northwest part. Do some areas out in there. Kind of give you an idea with that. Also, we're gonna do some asphalt patching this week out on Hackberry. And then also, there's a spot on Maple 165th. Between 165th and 155th. It's where the culvert was put in and...
Right.
It's got a pretty good hump to it. So, we're gonna level that out, get that asphalted back. Did notify the city this morning if they need any asphalt Thursday, so I'm working with them. Trucks are still hauling gravel. Got three trucks. Two trucks running and a low boy or belly dump, I should say. They finished week before on Gene Bailey's area. Then they went back and finished on Neil Underwood last week. And now they'll be moving over in Donald Kaufman's area, going there. Sign crew, we're back going with that, working with the IT department. We're gonna start taking pictures of all of our signs, latitude, longitude. So, we have documentation of it. There's a computer software program with CIC that will download that into to give us some documentation on when our signs were put in. Running into a little bit of an issue on Arrowhead, on keeping the Arrowhead signs up.
Good achieves.
Exactly, along with Jayhawk and... Oh, there's one more industry blank, but anyhow.
Quail.
No, it wasn't quail. Kansas.
Kansas.
There it is. So, that's kind of where we're at there. Elm Creek Lake on the east boat ramp. We did shut it down due to the low water level. People can still enter the lake on the west side. So, that kind of lets you know where we're there. Question I do have, sidearm mower position. That individual that was running that transferred to the sign department. And now I believe I have an opening on the sidearm mower. And that position would be anything 54 Highway to the north. And we really need to see about filling that, but I'm not sure how that process works, whether permission or what we need to do on that.
How the process works, it's just that you recommend filling it and the commissioners approve it. You can advertise.
Okay.
Or fill it in or...
Okay. I would...
Normally, it's advertised for, I think, week two.
Right.
And then bring the applicants, tell us, and you hire who you want, really.
Okay. I would like to recommend filling that if at all possible, so I don't know.
I hear a motion.
I move that we backfill or open the position for a sidearm mower.
Here a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Normally, they put it in the paper and on social media, on advertising and...
I thought we might try social...
On the Bourbon County website.
Yeah, we might try our social media, see how that goes and go from there. See what we get for applicants and then if we need to reach out.
And if you want to, I know with some of the departments, like the janitorial staff, as well as the position that you were hired for, we did it by committee.
Okay.
And if you wanted some help to structure that, I'd be happy to...
Okay.
The commission would be happy to help facilitate...
Okay.
That type of process.
Okay. All right.
So, I got a phone number for you.
All right.
The 624-224-4077. It's concerning an issue north of Redfield on 125th. You might want to call a gentleman and see what his issue is.
Okay.
And then I have another one. Back earlier this summer, up on the state line between Zion and Xavier and Zion, there was a request from a gentleman to replace a culvert.
Okay.
And at that time, my understanding was that it was recommended that it be a 36-inch culvert with 40 foot long, and the number is 310-702-2658.
Okay. And do you have a crossroad on that? You said Xavier and Zion or is that...
Well, it's just it's on the Missouri-Kansas border.
Missouri-Kansas border, okay.
Yep.
And are you aware of where the demarcations? You know, some of the state line roads are maintained by Missouri township.
Right. The guys have been really great helping me out with that.
Okay.
Like one mile's ours and one mile's theirs and one mile's ours and one mile's theirs. So, yeah, they've been good with that. While we're talking culverts, I don't know where... Anyhow, last week, we got five culverts, I believe it was, put in and done probably close to a mile of ditching, so...
Fantastic.
We're working on that. My grader operators have asked to do a little ditching, so we're working together there to do some ditching with the graders, so...
Does CIC have the capability to monitor culvert installation, kind of like the signs?
You know, I have to ask, I'm not sure, but that... I know when we were starting a spreadsheet, Krista's gonna monitor it for us. So, any calls that come in on a culvert, that way we'll have it documented and we can go down. But I can tell you, we counted up and we're at 40 or 50, somewhere in mid 40s, lower 50s on culverts to get put in. We're getting a load in today and we're getting another half a load today and a half a load latter part of the week. And...
We normally have to purchase at least two purchases of culverts during the year.
Right.
It seems like it's a perpetual...
Right.
Problem that we deal with daily.
Right. Right. And in all fairness to the guys, there's one backhoe that we use. We have two, but one stays out at the landfill. But we have one backhoe and then a trackhoe to do our digging with, so it's... When we're trying to do culverts and trying to dig up for asphalt repairs.
Kind of goes hand in hand with the workload you have for ditching.
Right. So, we're a little bit short on equipment, but I think budget next year may have possibly been addressed. Is that correct? Did I see that in paperwork yesterday?
It's a start, yes.
That's awesome. Good.
So, culvert, I did get a call. Fellow's name was Steven Plaster, who lives out at Hyattville. And I believe he addressed the commission, I don't know, three or four months ago, and we approved his request.
Yep.
But as of last week, they have not been installed, so...
Right. I went out and visited with him. He was at the commission meeting last week.
Perfect.
We had to do a hydrology study for the area, but that's this week. If not this week, it'll be next week. And I have his card to call and let him know.
The other thing he mentioned is some potholes. Did he talk to you about those in and around Hyattville?
Okay. I think he did, to be honest, but I'll make note of it.
What is our policy in working in unincorporated cities? Are those our...
Our responsibility.
Yeah.
I know the roads have been bladed, the gravel roads have been bladed last week in there. And we're gonna go through with the bush hog and mow the right of ways inside Hyattville, so a lot of that area take care of.
Who do we have with us? Do you have a road issue that you'd like to discuss?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just...
So, what?
No road issue.
Oh, okay. So, I had a email or text message from Mr. Allen at the city commission. And he's requested for you and I and him to provide a tour for the organization of our facilities.
Okay.
I don't see a problem with it, really. But it's expanded now. We, there were some other people that want to tag along and it's just kind of an informative type thing, and so I don't... So, what I'm asking is, do you have a feel for if that's a problem?
I have no problem with that. I think that'd be wonderful.
Might help in showing our cooperation with the city and let them know what we have and how we go about our business.
Yes. I think that'd be wonderful.
So, I move that you give me permission to set up a tour with the city to investigate or tour the county facilities. Here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, one of the things I'd like to see is possibly if you could work with the city, or not the city. The community college, just see if we may be able to borrow one of their vans for the day. And then let's see if we can determine, I'll work out a date with you and I and the other people who wants to go on a tour.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
See what you can come up with there. One more thing that I do have that just popped in.
Sure, go ahead.
Shepherd Quarry, we're getting closer to being ready to do a blast at Shepherd Quarry, so let you know where that's at there, so...
Got your dirtwork hold on?
Pretty much. We're gonna, got a couple more days and then we'll have done what we need to have opened up.
Okay. May I give you a second?
So, anything else for me?
Is this week two?
Week two, yes.
How's it feel?
It's good.
How's it fit?
It's going well.
Good.
Everybody's been wonderful.
Fantastic.
Okay, so...
Yeah.
Move we go into executive session for seven minutes for attorney clerk currently. I do, please. Human glasses on here. Yeah, consultation was attorney on attorney clerk, probably to be three commissioners, you and Justin.
Okay.
I hear a second.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Take care of business while you're in there, okay?
Yeah, that's what we're doing. That's what we're going in right now. That's what we're doing right now.
Finally back. Back in Kansas.
Good to see that welcome zone coming.
Are you guys meeting in here?
Yeah, so. We're gonna make sure that we...
Microphones are off. It's still picking up, it's still picking up noise here.
Button on the left top.
Start U2 live.
Turn your mic back on. I don't know.
Yes, it is.
Seems to be. All right, so Justin has a waiver for us to sign regarding one of our quarries. And the other issue that we need to give Justin permission to develop a contract with the blasting contractor, so I move we give Justin permission to move forward with the contract.
Second.
For the blasting. Here a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I would entertain a motion to allow me to sign the waiver for Thomas Quarry.
Make a motion for Chairman O'Hare to sign the waiver for Thomas Quarry?
Here a second.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
That's...
I got a couple comments. One of them pertains to the patcher, one of them pertains to Elm Creek.
Okay.
Okay? I had heard some maybe questions of the quality of the product that's coming out of the patcher.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's something that is a widespread problem or if it's... Are these patches holding up? I guess is the question. And are we using the right recipe?
Right.
You know, kind of into the details of the quality of that. The other item on Elm Creek...
Can we talk to pothole patcher?
Sure.
I am wavering on the pothole patcher. I'm more of an asphalt patcher, but we're looking at having the company that sold that to us come down and do a demo so that I can understand more on the pothole patcher. I think it definitely has its place, and I would like for them to come down and demo to us again.
Sure.
So, I can have a better understanding of that, to be able to answer your questions, whether we're getting the...
The right recipe.
Right. For...
You know, from a material handling aspect, it makes a lot of sense. You know, you think of cold patching or hot patching.
Yes.
You've got to have a tamper, you got to, you know, you got to get several pieces of equipment and the temperature, everything has to be just about right.
Right.
And often, it's done with plate compactors and, you know, crews of five people where this, if it was tuned in and working right...
Right.
Is, makes a lot of sense.
Right.
Yeah, maybe the mix is not quite right, you know?
Right.
I don't know. I know they went out and did a demonstration on this, but I also know that if we went into just the asphalt or the cold patch, that we had to have an extra person.
Right.
So, we had a crew of three and it's a full-time job.
Right. It is. It is.
So, yeah, that'd be interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Super. The other thing with Elm Creek, you know, discussed a couple weeks ago about this leak?
Yes.
I wonder if it would make sense why perhaps we can see this area or generalized area where it's leaking, if there's any rip, wrap, peel back that rip, wrap, install a membrane, put the rip back on, and would that be a way of possibly fixing where it's piping under the dam? I don't think it would be that expensive to test it now that we have access.
Right. Now would be a time to look.
Now would be a time to, you know, I'd probably, see if you could hold Frank Young, he's been kind of involved with this.
Frank has been.
Bring him back out.
Okay.
Since we're talking about Elm Creek, we toured Elm Creek out there and it's my feeling that the main chelter house at Elm Creek, we probably need to stop renting it out until we get repairs done on that chelter house. Do you agree?
I agree with that.
So, I move that we no longer lease the main chelter house out until we can get the repairs made to that chelter house.
Well, I second that motion. What kind of damage or degradation did you...
We have rock falling off the face of the building.
Can I show pictures of it?
So, it's major?
True.
Yeah, I don't know.
And a little bit of...
And we had some trip hazards.
Trip, yeah. Squaring some stuff back up.
That...
That's on the inside?
That's right on the outside as you're coming out. And then there's the, and they were just, that's the size of them. They were just sitting there loose when we took them down, so every time...
So every time the door shut, they, uh, moved. But we took them down as soon as we, as soon as they brought to our attention. And then here's the part we're talking about. We had a trip out there and kind of see the jagged edges. So we'll saw cut that to get that straight.
So, um, any discussion?
So check, check a fabric as a potential when you're talking to...
Just for having it.
Pardon?
When you're talking to the engineer.
Frank, yes.
Uh, investigate the membrane as a potential...
Okay.
...remedy to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, anything else?
So we handle that through reservations. Is that, are reservations for that handled by the clerk's office or...
Both. Normally you have your gentleman out there.
Todd Box is our caretaker out there. Normally they contact him.
And we just have, have Kendall, anybody wanting to rent it. Because it, it doesn't include, or it doesn't, uh, include charges for the facility.
Is there charges? Do they go through you, Kendall, or? Yeah, they do go through Elm, Elm Creek caretakers.
Right. So, there you go.
All right, we'll, uh, get it closed and we'll leave the other two open. And there's some cosmetic things on the other two that will get taken care of before it's rented out again.
So does the seasonal demand of that shelter house, is it affected by duck hunting season or...
I think they still rent them during the hunting season as well.
So maybe posting some signs, a sign or two out by that shelter house.
Anything else from you?
That's all I have, Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Okay.
Are you guys ready for me?
Sure.
Give them a...
Jody, we, we might be yielding the floor to this couple back there in the corner.
They need a few seconds.
Okay.
I just got a question from Mr. O'Hara. Back to March 11th.
Is this microphone on?
No, my name's Frank Miller. But, uh, back on March 11th, I was just, I was looking at this papers and I was just curious if you had signed that COPS grant that Bill Martin had, uh, the grant that he had put in. I was wondering if Mr. O'Hara had signed that or if you had proved your signature on there?
No.
Mr. Meeks, where's he at?
He's back in the corner.
Justin?
Yes.
Back on March 11th, uh, Mr. Martin had put in a, uh, for a grant, for a COPS grant.
Yes.
Did you sign that? Did you, did you approve your signature on that?
On the application?
Yes.
It wasn't, no.
Well, then, why was your name put in the county attorney's file when you're not the county attorney?
We, we did our, uh, investigation into that and we had people involved in that and because of the way the grant was approved, that is no longer an issue.
Well, I just wondered who, who, okay, to forge the signatures to, from Mr. O'Hara, you know? And, I mean, I just wanted to know that. I mean, I'm concerned citizen.
Understand. No, we, we did our due diligence on that. We contacted different agencies and...
I mean, I, I feel like that something, you know, if anybody else was to do that, it'd, it'd be on spotlight. So I, I want to put it on spot. Because if you didn't prove your signature and you didn't prove yours and it was however it was done electronically or whatever, that, you know, who'd give the okay?
Understand. And what was your name again? I'm sorry.
Frank Miller.
Oh, hey, Frank.
I'm just, you know, I just want to know. I ain't trying to take up too much of your all's time. That's all I got to ask and say. So, I mean, I'd like for something to be done about it. I mean, man above the law, who you must afford it or something. Ain't no better than me.
So noted.
I mean, I, I want, I want something done about it.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. I don't have anything, uh, really up to update on the Spark grant where we're working on the B-Works project and getting the construction done on it. And we just need to ask that the voucher that I submitted last week get paid today.
Okay, so you want to explain to them what the vouchers, here's the deal on the vouchers. Uh, they gave me prepared for, uh, permission to sign the MOUs, the commission did. But when it comes to spending the, the, the grant money, uh, anything, and I do believe that we made this, this, uh, motion that anything over $2,500 for purchases that had to be approved by the commission. So, once the MOU's signed and we go into, it's my understanding that the money's deposited, is that correct, in a county account?
Yeah, the county has had the money since July. We've spent about $34,000 already worth of admin fees.
And then the, uh, the commission's disposed to, to approval for anything, probably $2,500.
So I'd ask that, um, our voucher for the website building grant of $33,000 get, um, the cut has, has to get cut, check, the check has to get cut. They need their money before the next process.
We can do that. So, uh, and this is for marketing and website?
This is for the website building and marketing grant that we're giving, uh, 20 eligible businesses.
Any questions, Eric? So I could all entertain a motion to allow me to sign the voucher?
Uh, make a motion for Chairman O'Hara to be able to sign the voucher for the website.
Development. I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kendall. Is she listening?
Yes, she is.
Uh, can we get a special check cut for that amount? Yes.
Yeah.
She does.
Very good.
She does. I, she said the evening yesterday.
Spark dispersment? No.
No, there's been about $34,000 written out of the account so far. Okay, so we'll get that check wrote today. Um, and the voucher's already been sent and the buckets have already been sent to the clerk's office as well, too. The second thing that I have on my list to ask you guys about today is not Spark related, but it's grant related for businesses. It's the community development block grant that we are still working on. Uh, we have another business, business that has supplied all of the criteria to, um, be awarded a grant. And this is a grant for businesses that are located outside the city limits of Fort Scott. And they have, um, very, there's very strict, um, guidelines to qualify for this grant. So, anyway, they, uh, we have another determination of level of review. I think there's been the three or four businesses that you guys have approved already. This is for Bradley Feed and Cattle Services. Uh, and the project description is Bourbon County proposes, "As a result of disaster declarations related to COVID-19, to grant funds for working capital expenses to Bradley Feed and Cattle Services, a feed and mineral supplier which was affected by the disaster in order to retain one FTE for the amount not to exceed $14,000." And so, um, in order for us to ask for a check to get issued from the state, we'll just need to have you guys, um, a, a motion to allow, uh, Lynn O'Hara to sign this determination of level of review.
I move that we authorize Chairman O'Hara to sign the said document in favor of Brad...
Bradley Feed and Cattle.
Bradley Feed and Cattle.
Mm-hmm.
Here, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Okay. All right, thank you, you guys. I'm gonna bring this over to you, Lynn.
What's the date today?
I think it's the 13th.
It's the 13th.
Sure enough.
Okay, all right.
Hey, Eric.
Anything else you guys need from me?
No.
That's all I have today.
And I know that, uh, I received one more MOU over the weekend, so I don't know how close they are finishing up 100% on that.
I think that, um, there was a couple MOUs that they had to do in person because, you know, there's, well, not, not everybody has, uh, email and, and internet access and stuff like that. So they're doing a lot of due diligence and making sure that they're reaching out to people and helping them get those, those funds out.
And I, I know that I signed a lot of vouchers last week to get the checks out the, at the door.
Yeah, yeah. That's good. I think that with the small business grants, um, I think, I'm, I think those, those checks went out last Friday. They're not, yes, so, good. So our small business grant program, those checks went out.
I had, um, I had a, uh, an email from, uh, Perry's Pork Rinds.
Kelly?
Kelly, yes. She's wanting to, to, I guess, see if there's any grants available for, for, uh, helping their business get off the ground.
We've been working with Kelly's, um, with Perry's Pork Rinds for, uh, the better part of a, a year or so. They received a small business grant through our Spark funds. And, um, you know, we've been working with them to put together business planning so that we could present to, um, those who, you know, give out grants or, or loans and, and see about, you know, getting that capital. We have the B-Works program, the, uh, the Small Business Development Center will be here and I'm sure that'll be another good resource for...
That'd be a great resource.
Especially an online presence, perhaps.
Well, they thought, I think they thought a pretty dynamic online presence because they get a lot of their sales from online. So I'm not sure that the website grant would be a good, um, that would be a good avenue for them. But I do know that they're, um, they're doing really well in, in their business and we're excited to see them grow their brand some.
You know, I was interested in this trip to Oregon that I, my son and I were on. Uh, to reserve a campsite, you, you had to do it all online.
Yeah.
And there was, uh, there were a lot of different, uh, protocols in place to reduce the transaction between humans.
Uh-huh.
In some places, the showers were, were closed and stuff like that, but, uh...
You see, when we're having our, those businesses, those campsites and RV places and when we're having an online presence with them to be able to schedule and book those, those camping spots, it really helps the entire community and raising awareness of the amenities that we have here, coming here, spending the night here, spending their money, eating food here, going to the gas stations here. So it really helps the entire community when we have businesses that have an increased online presence that will increase foot traffic.
Agreed.
All right, well, I'm gonna get this off. There's gonna be some happy people today. Thank you, you guys. Oh, my foot is the most frustrating thing I've ever dealt with in my life. I, I've never been so slowed down so much as I have these last couple of weeks with this stinking foot.
Morning, Susan.
Good morning.
It worked right on schedule.
Doing good.
While you have a few minutes.
Sure.
May I start using this room beginning Monday for voting purposes? Or are you planning on having...
My, I, we'll have to, we can, since, we did this for, uh, the, uh, primary, I guess we can do it for the general. So we was, I, I, uh, we recommended we just not have a meeting until after the election. Kind of like we did for the, uh, primary. So I'd entertain a motion if you want to.
But if there, uh, okay, I, I so moved that I think a provision in there, rather than emergency meetings, if, if there's topics that need to be addressed before then that we, we address them on Tuesday and maybe have an alternative location. I know it's difficult now with all this technology, but, you know, we might have, you know, you never know what emergency business might arise between now and then.
No, if it does, we can get a meeting scheduled. Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, for the next, the next schedule, the next scheduled meeting.
And if we need emergency meetings, we're gonna try to schedule them on Tuesdays during our regular scheduled time.
At a different location.
Or, or the emergency management, we've had meetings there. The location is somewhat flexible.
So when is, uh, when's your canvassing gonna be?
Does canvassing... Uh, I believe Wednesday, the 12th, at 10:00. I can shoot an email with that though.
So we need our next scheduled meeting is on the 10th. Okay? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So the next scheduled meeting is November 10th?
Yes. I know that the, uh, using this room and for the primary worked out very well. Susan? Are you ready to, we're ready for you.
I, um, I think Robert is bringing like the bids for the ambulance.
Okay, good.
So...
We'll wait.
Might want to wait until he gets here.
That's fine.
I can go over the financials if you want me to.
Oh, that's good.
Whatever you want me to do. I mean, I can...
Oh, you're gonna be the bearer of bad news or what?
Um, it's not horrible.
Okay. You can go over the financials.
Is this the best place to be?
Uh, turn your mic on. A little red, red light I'll be on.
Okay, it's on.
Fisher, Fisher, do you want this next or do you want to give it to us then or all the books?
Thanks, sir.
So you can hear me a little bit better. I will take off my mask. What I have, uh, presented here is a comparison of last year's, um, Omni EMS billings compared to this year and how they're coming in. Um, a little bit lower than we did last year. And that was without January because we didn't have any, um, revenue coming in. And then these dollars, the way I understand it from Justin, is how you pay us at the city to run the EMS services. So the budget, um, if you kind of jump down to the bottom section, this kind of gives you a recap of where we are today. We started off the year with $181,000, um, in cash reserves. And revenue to date is $643,000 and I'm projecting it to be $964,000 based off the agreements that we have with the county. Salaries and benefits, um, we're currently at $578,000, projecting to be at around $700,000. projecting to be at around seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. And if you kinda go down through the contractual and see how we, I'm showing that our ending cash balance at the end of the year, if everything works out correctly, will have about three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And I know we're wanting to, to buy an ambulance, and here, here's my thoughts on cash reserves. The auditor, and he's your auditor as well as our auditor, always recommends three months' cash reserves. You will not be at three months' cash reserves if we purchase an ambulance. So I just want to caution you with that. That's what we use to start our operations up in the next year. Now, I do feel comfortable that we have enough to, at least two months. So we're just shy a third month of operating cash. So, and I know this ambulance is much needed.
So I understand that the ambulance that we're wanting to replace is pretty well on its last leg.
In bad shape, yeah, yeah.
And I also know that we have sometimes difficulty in fulfilling the needs. So the ambulance is very, a very critical part of the ongoing operation.
That is correct, that's correct. So I just wanted you to kinda be aware of where, where we're projected to end up, and that's if we average, you know, how we're averaging right now. If those, if those revenues drop off, then of course, you're gonna be a little bit worse shape. Yeah, yeah, yep.
I understand.
So that's really all I had to report. And then I think Robbie, I don't know where he's at, but he is supposed to present you with the bids that they have received on the ambulances.
Okay.
Susan and I, on Friday, we weren't able to talk through a district, so we're gonna try to get another meeting set up at the next, you know, ten business days. Friday, I was, I had to leave, I had eleven-thirty, and we were pretty involved with the EMS budget and some personal matters that we'll discuss at later. We'll try to get together a little sooner. How about that?
I do have, I do have two requests, two, they're kind of an ongoing request. We had St. Martin's that had already hooked into the sewer way before we decided that we were gonna have any kind of a hookup fee. And also, there was also another resident that was working on hooking up to the sewer. And at that time, we didn't have anything established, and I feel like it's only right to not charge them this hookup fee because it came well after the discussion. We had already had discussions with both parties ahead of us making that decision, and so I would ask that we allow them to not have to pay that hookup fee.
Any, anything from your perspective, Justin?
The sewer agreement does not specify at all, Susan and I talked about this prior to Friday's meeting, about how there's, it's really lacking on what protocols and procedure you follow to establish a sewer person on the district. So we've got some work to do there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
There's, there's no, it wasn't, it was kind of forgotten, I guess.
Yeah.
So, let's bring it, how about if we bring it up again after you and Justin have your, have your meeting?
Okay.
Is that agreeable to you guys?
Uh, yeah, is, so St. Martin's Academy's already hooked up and functioning.
They're hooked in, yeah.
Is this other person, is it contingent upon him building something, or?
Um, he's in the process of building right now, and early on in the year, we had told him that there would not be a cost to hook into the sewer.
There was nothing at that time.
Right.
And we're trying to formalize it.
Yeah.
So you already set a precedent.
Yeah, so I feel like if we could, if you guys, I don't know if you wanna vote today, but I would ask that you would, but if we could, maybe these two individuals, we go ahead and say, you, you don't have to pay that hookup charge, but moving forward, we will have something in place that really spells out who we're gonna let on, how we're gonna let them on. I've already had some discussions with our engineer, Ann Michael, and we have some really good thoughts surrounding that, and so we'll probably come back to you with a better presentation on whether it be a commercial or residential.
Very good.
And Susan did return our box of information, and it was much better returned than what we got. So it's hard to have it organized.
Yeah, I'm kind of, when I, when I got the box, it was just kind of all thrown in the box, and I was like, I told Justin, I said, "I organized it for you. It's all in folders now," so. Yeah.
And we have been through that box before, so I understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So anything else you need from me at this time?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks for the information.
Yep, absolutely.
I think Robbie's here too.
So Kendall, do we need to get on our next meeting agenda, the tenth, to revisit this?
Yes, I would say. What do you think? That should give them time to have their meeting.
You're right.
Hello, are we up?
Robert, you're up.
We're all, we've been, we've been waiting for you.
Hey.
How are you?
Good. Well, we haven't met in a long time. I think it was February due to the COVID and the shutdowns and everything.
Yes, sir.
But I guess no news is good news since I haven't had to come and speak with you about anything. I would like to do an update on what we've been up to before we get into the ambulance bid proposals. I'm gonna throw a lot of numbers at you real quick, but I'll try to go slow. September, last month, we ended up doing two hundred and forty-one calls for service, which is the most we've ever done. Our prior record was two thirty-six, and I don't remember any Mercy months being that high. So that's quite a few. We ended up transporting a hundred and eighty-four people last month. We had fifty-seven dry runs, and we transferred seventy-two from this facility or other facilities. We had thirteen medical alarms or lift assists, five PD fire standbys, and two rescue standbys. We also did eight event standbys because we're getting into football season. So as of two, twenty-twenty, we've done one thousand six hundred and seventy-four calls so far this year. We transported one thousand two hundred and forty-nine people, four hundred and twenty-five dry runs, and we've done five hundred and fourteen transfers. So I've also did a running total since we became a service. And actually, I went back to March first because that's when we began billing as a service. And we actually became Burbank County EMS in April, but we were billing the month before. So we've done three thousand six hundred and ninety calls so far. We've transported two thousand seven hundred and sixty people, and we've done one thousand two hundred and seventy-five transfers. And actually, this month's busy also. We're already at a hundred this month, and we've already transferred twenty-nine people this month. So we're north of one thousand three hundred transfers already. So that's significant. I also did an assessment on the combined unit mileage, just to give you an idea, since we're here talking about a new ambulance today, what it takes to do those kind of numbers, what kind of mileage, et cetera, we're putting on our trucks. Since you own those trucks, the county owns those trucks. So I did an assessment, this started in April of twenty-nineteen, and I ran it through to February of twenty-twenty. So to get a full twelve months, I kinda had to go ahead and estimate the next two months out. So for EMS one, two, and three, those will be our trucks that we use primarily for 911 calls within the county. We did thirty-one thousand one hundred and forty-two miles on those three trucks. Those trucks generally don't leave the county. Now, on our transport vans, the Mods that we use mainly to go out of town, in that same ten-month period, we did sixty-five thousand miles. So a combined mileage of ninety-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, which puts my estimate out at one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred miles in a year on all your trucks. So that's gonna tell you the kind of mileage you're gonna get in a year and that you're gonna have to be getting a new ambulance every two or three years. So. Bid proposals. I went with three different companies. One would be Osage, one will be ARV, and the other would be Wield Coach, or, which is distributor to sold by Fieldfire. This will do a lot of fire truck stuff. The reason I went with Wield Coach is they're a global manufacturer. They're probably one of the biggest ambulance manufacturers in the world, okay? They're located in Winter Park, Florida, and they spit out ambulances rather quick, lots of them, okay? ARV, these are the units that Nevada primarily uses. I went over and looked at them, and they're really nice, high-quality, good workmanship, good stuff. They're manufactured in North Carolina, but they're sold and distributed through a facility in Columbia, Missouri. So basically, it's manufactured, and then it's flatbedded to their other facility where it's inspected, graphics, whatever you want done, and then it's delivered from that point. The other one is Osage. They're located in, just outside of Jefferson City. It's a small company, has about nineteen employees. Reason I chose them is because EMS one, two, and three are all Osage trucks that we already have that Mercy purchased, and actually, I think they're all remounts. I think we've had numerous remounts as long through Mercy. So, and, just, it's a local small company. So, do you wanna get into prices and?
Uh, so you just kinda, yeah, run through the three bid prices and then probably give us a recommendation.
Okay. Wield Coach comes in at, and what I did is I sent the schematics from EMS two to all these manufacturers, so the truck would be the same, no matter who makes it, the box anyway. Wield Coach came in at one forty-six, eight ninety-one, which will be our lowest bid. And they also include the power cot, which is the hydraulic battery-powered cot that goes up and down, which is great for your staff, wear and tear, back injuries, things like that. So that total come out to one sixty-five, six eighty-three through Wield Coach. Osage came in higher, at one sixty, two sixty-four, but they got us a discount on the cot of twenty-five hundred dollars. The cot goes for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. That's what one of these cots costs. So a total from Osage is one seventy-seven, three twenty-eight. Another problem with Osage is they're being a smaller manufacturer. Their, their build time is like two months longer than the other two will be, okay? The quickest we can probably get a truck is six months. Osage is looking at eight months, okay? The ARV came in at one fifty-five, three four three with the cot. They also gave us the same discount that Osage gave us. It came in at one seventy-two, four oh seven. So Osage and ARV are about eight to ten thousand more than Wield Coach. So. Osage does have two demos they're about to start on, and he says if we were to choose them and we get a purchase order signed or a sales agreement signed rather quickly, we could reserve one of those demos, and we can actually have changes made as long as they haven't started cutting sheet metal yet. So that would decrease, you know, a month or two on delivery. Because it takes eight weeks to get a cabin chassis from Ford. So you're not even gonna start on an ambulance for two months, so.
So what's your recommendation?
Um, if we're looking at financials, we were budgeted at one sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, I believe, and Wield Coach comes in the closest to that. And if we're gonna be fiscally responsive, that would be the, the choice. It may not be near, you know, the highest quality like the other two may be, but I need an ambulance. I'm mainly after the cabin chassis is what I'm after. So, and I'm going with a Ford E four fifty, gas, seven-three. That's the new V-eight gas that's out. It's got four hundred some horse, four hundred some torque. I prefer gas over diesel for a 911 response unit. I've got my own issues with, you know, driving a cold diesel hot, wear and tear on, you know, ball joints, tires, all that. I'd rather have a gas for a 911, so. And then plus the initial cost is cheaper too, so. You got anything?
No.
Anything else? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the ambulance bid as presented.
Which one?
Wield Coach, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Awesome. And I think I'll just have to get a purchase agreement signed by Commissioner.
I move that we give, Chairman, permission to sign a purchase agreement for the said vehicle?
He's sitting in front of this.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, there's a couple more things I'd like to talk to you about other than an ambulance.
Sure.
Christine with Omni is my primary contact for any billing issues on my side of the ambulance service. She, me and her both discussed Missouri Medicaid and credentialing. We are not credentialed in Missouri, with Missouri Medicaid. And we're seeing, and even when the hospital was here, a lot of Nevada people, Missouri people come over to Bourbon County for their health care, and we're still seeing a little bit of that. I'm putting through some Missouri Medicaid bills. She says usually those are probably gonna be denied, but you can, have to go through the appeals process, and it just takes forever and ever, I guess. And it has to really be deemed an emergency, and like on some of our transfers, they're not really deemed an emergency, which makes that process even a little more difficult, getting reimbursed for that if it's Missouri Medicaid. So you may wanna discuss that with Jody or Krista, whoever does your credentialing for you, if you guys choose to go that route.
So are you suggesting we get?
I'm seeing more, I've been seeing...
Provider number for Missouri Medicaid?
Yes, and we're so close to the line, and being with Missouri.
I would say probably coordinate with Jody. She's the one that got the credentialing in the first place if, if that doesn't work out.
And since you're CMS subscriber or, you know, credentialed, they, Christine thought they would probably weigh any fee like they did when you got your Missouri Medicaid credentialing because you're CMS credentialed, so. And the only other thing she asked me to talk to you about, this is coming from Omni and Christine, is about getting a lockbox, which apparently streamlines and improves the process when the patients pay their money or you get checks, and it goes directly to this lockbox, and it, it helps with sharing of information between the county and Omni.
We had, we discussed that.
Yeah, we discussed that, but I don't think we...
I don't know, but I don't think it ever materialized.
Okay, well, I've got an application for the lockbox here. She wanted me to present this to you, and maybe you can talk to Jody about this also. And she even thought that maybe Omni would, it's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month fee that goes on your invoice, that Omni maybe even go half with you on that. So it's both part of...
I was, I was thinking it was part of the original contract language.
I really did, I thought we had had a part of the original contract. It should have already been set up. I know we, we discussed it at length.
No, I, that was an option when we, when we went with Omni. That was an option to do that box. And I think we, we chose not to do that for the first year to see how things went.
Maybe so, sets a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month?
Yeah.
And she thought maybe they'd split it with you too, because it helps them and you on your side, so.
And I know Omni was supposed to set it up if, if we approve it.
I'm not sure, sir, that was kinda before me, so.
So we need to look at that contract that we did sign and see, see what's there, and then kinda come back and circle that gap. So the Missouri Medicare provider, Medicaid provider number and the, the drop box are outstanding issues that need some, need to be addressing.
Okay.
Need to be addressed.
Can I leave this for Jody?
Yes.
Yep.
And I have the, the contract here for that.
And we will probably do the branding here, correct?
Yes.
On deliveries through the local?
We'll do the local.
Yeah.
We, we use local to brand those trucks. We switched to Bourbon County, so he's got the...
Artwork?
Yeah, he's got it all, so. What else? Uh, we need to discuss, obviously, you're adding a truck to your fleet. Are you wanting to stay at a six-truck fleet, seven-truck fleet? Which truck do you wanna remove from the fleet?
So tell me, does the, the box and the chassis, those are two different things? Is the, is the chassis wore out on maybe the seventh one? Or, or is it the, you know?
The two trucks that I'd recommend replacing is eight ninety, which is a two thousand and one Ford Powerstroke seven-three, and mainly just because it's outdated, the mileage isn't that bad. It's got a hundred and forty-four thousand miles on it. You can just imagine a twenty-year-old vehicle's gonna get outdated, you know? The other one would be EMS one, which is a twenty-twelve Chevy Duramax. It has two hundred and forty thousand miles on it, so it's seen a lot of life. I think it's been remounted at least once or twice on that box. The box has seen a lot of life. But we just put three thousand dollars into the new exhaust system in that truck, and it may go for another hundred and fifty thousand miles, you know? It's got a clean exhaust now. So it does need a new AC compressor, which is eight hundred dollars, Tom quoted, but we're entering winter, fall, winter. That could be put off until spring. And the other problem you've got... And the other problem you've got with a seven truck fleet is housing a seventh truck, I don't have anywhere to house a seventh truck, and if we have a, every truck we have has to be licensed, we can't just unlicense it and put it somewhere, and then tomorrow re-license it, it's a process. So it would have to stay licensed and in a climate controlled facility, building, so. It would be nice to have seven, you never know when you're going to have trucks down for mechanical, or multiple football games, et cetera, et cetera. But.
Well, you have any idea?
We don't really have that decision to make until we receive this new one, which is six months away, but it's good to start thinking about.
I asked Tom's opinion, our mechanic, and he couldn't really make an opinion either way on which one to keep, and if you decided to move on from one, or keep them both, or what.
Are they worth anything? I don't know, I mean, I'm sure there's something out there, somebody, you know, you see a lot of people use them for learning, everything from tool repair to.
I know, I have a.
Not for penny, I mean per penny.
I have a nephew that buys them, they, they're, they get them fairly cheap.
Right. I think, I think somebody would be after the motor, if anything.
They make good tool trucks, the sign crew.
Is there any other, is there another gurney or something you were talking about maybe to buy next year, or do you need that going to get fixed?
You got it fixed.
Is there one that you get on the list though to buy? Is there any big purchases for next year, like a defibrillator or anything that we need to? You guys are good, that's good news.
We got, we got all new monitors last year, right now, no, I think we're good.
And this bid included a new cot, so.
A lot can happen in six months.
Yes.
And the main thing is, like he said, having them licensed, and once they stay licensed, they have to be climate controlled, which we aren't, we filled every bay we have, so.
Running out of room.
So the ambulance barn, does it have six bays?
That's four.
I was thinking.
Four bays in there, and then behind is an extra bay that we put one in, and then the fire department houses the six.
Okay.
I can't remember what this is.
Oh, sorry.
I've been calling Christie about that, she says it sounded to be fine to do that. What Justin said, just like it's a private request. Shut the fuck up.
Can you find enough people?
Uh.
Qualified people?
Um, there's a shortage, everybody's struggling, I've had calls from other directors, other services, wanting to know how we're managing, and it's just the region, our region.
So is it, now Fort Scott Community College does, do they train paramedics?
Nothing.
They train?
EMTs.
EMTs?
Like a one semester type thing.
And a paramedic is, sort of like a nursing, a four-year program?
Yeah, depends on how fast they get them through, mine was two years, but that was several years ago.
And where is that if Fort Scott doesn't train the paramedic person?
No, sir.
Where do you go for that training?
I went, I went to Coffeyville back then.
Okay.
I think Coffeyville still has a program, Missouri Southern has a program, Johnson County has a program.
What prevents Fort Scott from having a program, is it their level of? So one of the concepts that was discussed is, is along the line of pipeline recruiting, but where you offer volunteer firefighters, training for EMP or paramedic. And, and ultimately what you end up having is a talent pool of people who are interested in providing this EMS-type service, they fight fires on the, you know, on their free time, if you will, but it can become a career path, especially if you tie the education component to that, you have a better, more highly trained fire department, but you also have a pipeline to fill the paramedic and EMP type spots. I don't know if that's something that we ought to, you know, explore, I know it certainly works in other communities quite well.
We had discussed, we had discussed that, Florida having their own agreement with the community college, to, to your EMTs and staff, that they want to create that, curb out the good, and if we train them that they had a, what, two or three year commitment to stay on, stay on the ambulance service in Bourbon County.
Commissioner Beth and myself and Susan and Dave, Dave walked in that day, he was going through the hallway, and we talked about, you know, Coffeyville or some other community colleges that have that program, but we have the, Dave sent a contract, and we talked to Susan about what we could do to maybe get that down. So I was going to get a meeting set up with the community college, because we really want to do an interloper with them on some other things too, so hopefully we can get that done, hopefully kind of slow that down a little bit.
Yeah, we were supposed to have EMT riders with us last spring, and due to the COVID, it was all shut down, so.
It changed a lot of things.
Which is good, it gives you a chance to pick from, for the pool.
Yeah, you know who you want to keep, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, to get on a paid service in, in Florida primarily, is where I spent a lot of my time, you almost had to come up through the volunteer fire organization to get on a paid position. And, I do think they had deferral of education as, as part of the package, so.
Which is good, but it's just, once we start that, that's two years down the road.
It, it's planting trees, it's not planting corn, I understand.
Thank you.
But there's a time to plant trees.
Yeah.
Corn don't always produce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
See you guys.
See you.
I had a, an email from Mr. Brown, Nick Graham, probably the last day or so, I can't remember, when, and he asked if he could be on, in the agenda today, so we need to make a.
An, a motion.
Yes, allow him.
I move that we accommodate Nick Graham as an addition to our agenda for today.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, yep. Give me a, how about, give me a second, I ran me an empty.
Okay.
Take a real short pause, man.
I did, I did receive your email.
Okay.
And, comprehended, is that a copy of it?
Yeah, basically.
I, I don't, you can hand that out to someone that maybe who hasn't received it.
I sent it at ten P M or something.
Oh, but I didn't.
I just picked those up, so, they're relevant to the discussion. Literally hot off the list.
Thank you. Yes, I've already seen it, so I, I consumed it this morning. Well Nick, we're YouTube in life, maybe thanks to part of your, your recommendation?
Yeah, I'm pretty, it's a pretty nice setup.
Microphones, maybe get those, there's some adjustment on those legs if you need a little taller.
No, I should be good.
Okay, Nick, sorry about that.
No, no problem.
Is your, is the mic on?
Red button?
No, red light.
It's red, the red light is on, does that mean?
Means let's go.
Okay, good.
You're live.
Thanks for accommodating me and squeezing me in on short notice. Just to sort of preface this, I, with the help of Bobby Reed and a whole bunch of friends of ours, chipping in time, money, am running a write-in campaign for county clerk, with a little twist. We found out in Kansas you can run a write-in campaign with ballot stickers, where they, voters can place a sticker with your name on it on the ballot, instead of just writing you in, they can do one or the other. What brings me to you is, and I know nothing good ever comes from something that starts with, well, on Facebook the other night, but, Friday afternoon, about five o'clock, I was out putting up signs in Bronson, and a friend of mine texted me a screenshot from the Bourbon County Republican Facebook group, which is about five hundred some very dedicated voters in Bourbon County. And I sent you guys screenshots of it, but it said, "Nick Graham is having labels printed and mailing out to be affixed to the ballot, the labels might cause the equipment to jam, creating a problem, if your ballot is ripped, it will not be counted, I talked to the county clerk's office." Obviously this alarmed me, especially because about ten minutes prior to that, I had received an email from Rachel French at Wardcraft, letting me know that postcards with aforementioned ballot stickers were going out in the mail that day, and are, so they're probably showing up this week in about sixty-two hundred mailboxes. I panicked, but I corrected him because, A, Wardcraft backs the labels a hundred percent, I talked to their sales and operations manager, he's very confident in their product, and also even if your ballot were to catch on fire per state law, you would just get a new one. He's, I've known this guy, I grew up going to church with him, in the same church, and he was very apologetic, so he then deleted that later and posted, "I apologize if I have offended Nick Graham with my post earlier, I was asked about the sticker earlier, and I said I would find out and let them know, my earlier post was what I was told by the clerk's office." So, and that apology is still up on the Bourbon County Republicans group. What concerned me about this, aside from the obvious, is it brought to mind on Wednesday, September twenty-third, about ten twenty-eight AM, I got an email out of the blue from the county clerk, and I won't read the whole thing, basically, I'm being told that you plan to distribute stickers for a write-in campaign, I am concerned about the use of stickers provided by you or any other candidate placed on the ballots that go through our voting machines. In the past, a sticker was used on a ballot, that sticker jammed in the voting machine, the machine would not take any ballots after that, support had to be contacted, and the machine had to be completely replaced in order for any other ballots to be run through. I am sure you would not want to be responsible for damaging our voting equipment. Now, I'm not aware, and I've asked around, of this happening in Bourbon County, of any voting equipment malfunctions due to ballot stickers. I do know from back on September third, I had a long discussion over email with Clay Barker, who's the Assistant General Counsel for the Secretary of State's Office, he said Bourbon County has no ordinances prohibiting ballot stickers, so that was our all-clear to go ahead and have Wardcraft print them out. Counties can enact ordinances prohibiting ballot stickers, it has to go through the county commission, and the clerk usually has to work with the county attorney or probably counselor in our case, because some counties have had issues in the past with ballot stickers damaging equipment. But, according to, I spoke to him on the third, he said they were under the impression Bourbon County was working on one, but they had not passed one. So, and I had heard, and I haven't heard anything else from him ever since we got the all-clear, he said I was total green light, so. The stickers are printed, the postcards are printed, and probably hitting mailboxes right now. I did offer and respond to the clerk's email on twenty-third, saying I gladly, once the stickers are here, I'm getting cottonmouth. Once the stickers are here, we could put them on a sample ballot, do a test run, measure them with calipers, because Wardcraft has a one sheet full of just tech specs for a sticker, which is kind of crazy, but, so we could make sure it was within the right thickness. So, basically I came here just to sort of clear the air, you guys are the final decision-maker and arbiter on this, so, and now these stickers are about to hit everywhere, so if there were any concerns, I just wanted to bring it up to you. As I said, there's no state or county law prohibiting these, and I thought it was sort of a fun little thing to throw in. A write-in campaign's a pretty hard nut to crack, but I thought this kind of helped add the appeal, made it a little easier for people to vote, but I just kind of wanted to bring this to you, you guys would have the ultimate decision anyway on the use of stickers or not, so, I just want to put that out there and kind of get your opinion. And I just was able to pick up stickers for the first time ever about an hour ago, so I put a couple on each of your desks, just so you could see the thickness, get a feel for them.
Well, I, you know, it's mentioned that the county may have been considering an ordinance, I don't think, I'm not aware of, of any ordinance that would either prohibit or permit stickers.
Right.
This is, this is the first time I've, I've learned of this process.
Well, and I asked Clay, I said, has this been recently, that they've reached out about this, and his reply was, and this is one of the emails, "I assume it was the clerk county election staff telling our election staff, but our staff did not recall who said what, when, only that it came from Bourbon County." So, it didn't sound like it'd come up for discussion from you guys, but that was just me, you know, dotting my i's and crossing my t's before I had thousands of stickers printed that would hopefully not have to be tossed out.
Well, I'm on searching, because I thought we had a conversation about this sometime earlier, before the primary, or maybe even after the primary, after the primary, give me a minute, if you don't mind.
Yeah, my main concern is I don't want there to be a panic out there of people thinking I've put bombs that will blow up the ballot scanners in their, each of their mailboxes, when Greg Fassett, Wardcraft, Rachel French, they're all very confident in their product, so.
Twelve scratches.
Look at this.
Pretty good.
I'm not seeing anything, I'm all thinking, I'm not worried of anything, I know we had a discussion somewhere at some time, and I know that the discussion was, was a lot of war and all from the state, and I know, I'm confident that we weren't going to dislodge.
Right, and the funny thing is, if you read the state law in the handbook, even the counties that prohibit them, if somebody were to. that prohibit them, if somebody were to vote with one, they'd still have to count it, just because it's voter's intent, so it's more of a suggestion than anything. I'm assuming they'd set it aside for hand count, but I just wanted to bring it before you guys, see if you had any concerns, otherwise, we're kind of off to the races. Technically, we already are.
I don't have any concerns, Nick. I think to change the rules in the middle of the stream is never a good idea.
So, yeah, like I said, I mainly wanted to alleviate any concerns from people out there that destruction might occur on election night, because I don't, Wardcraft would not have produced them for me if they felt there was any risk of that. So, all right, thank you.
Is this a common thing that Wardcraft does? Kind of a specialty?
The, I don't think they've ever done this before. I, I just specified what I needed it for and some of the specs for the ballots. I mean, they've helped out with mailers for, uh...
Everyone, yeah?
Yeah, for everyone, but yeah, I think this was the first time for them.
Outside the box.
Just a question, would you have to make a provision in the, uh, when you assess the provisional balance, if the sticker isn't completely affixed to the area that it was supposed to be affixed to?
It will not count if it's put in the wrong race. Or, or, I shouldn't say that.
So, if you open the voting machine and his label's sitting in the bottom of the counter, then you don't know which ballot that was, came from?
Right.
But you know there's one ballot in there that should have added?
That should, right, and people can still write in and circle in if they want to, but...
Okay, just, uh, thinking ahead of time.
Right.
If we wanted to debate.
Voter intent is pretty broad, like they could write NIK with crayon and if we're gonna write.
I understand Mickey Mouse, you don't have to spell a zing right for you to get the vote. Good, you can just put MM.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nick. All right.
Hi, Sheriff.
Good morning, everyone. For clarification for last week.
So, uh, Bill, just, just for, for, uh, we would, we would prefer people to leave their masks on, please.
I understand it's take five minutes and make sure that there's no muffles or anything in regard to what I say through the mask, we'll be, I'll be gone.
I know that, I know that there's a very big outbreak, I'll just bring your mic over in, in the correction facility.
And I tested negative.
There's not a, there's no outbreak in the correction facility?
On the jail side, but not the sheriff's side, I'm here to represent the sheriff's side, not the correction side.
We just, I just feel more comfortable.
We're gonna roll on here. Last week, we had met in regard to miscommunications or whatever in regard to this grant that was reported. Uh, we talked to the state. Do you guys have to spend the Sparks monies first? In my understanding of talking to Will, he'll have that spent by the end of next month. Is that correct, Mr. Wells?
It'll be done, spent probably by the end of this...
Can't hear you, Will.
It'll be spent by, I, right now, it'll be spent more than likely by the end of this month.
Okay.
But it'll be gone.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with that being said, what Bill's leading into is the monies that, that he and I put together is continuation of PPE support and things of this nature, and, and that money we can start spending, we have a little over a year to spend it, is that correct, Bill? And once that's done, then, you know, wants to support the jail and deputies and so on and so forth, and other first responders, why we went for that grant. But, Bill, go ahead.
Uh, he pretty much cleared it up. He'll be done spending the money, like you said, after the month, I have one year to spend the remaining amount. Um, so it'll be all, we're public safety.
Correct. And that was, that was my understanding when I talked to, to Will, that, that as soon as the Spark money was, was exhausted, that he could get into this fund and, and continue right on down the road with PPE purchases or, or whatever we needed, that qualified for this grant. Is that correct, Will?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, now, so the next question is concerned is that the money has to be paid out of my budget. Once the money is paid, I will voucher the invoices back to the state, and then the state will reimburse the county.
Okay.
So, just that everybody's on the same page, so when you start seeing, like I said, there's $18,000 that's already been spent, that's gonna be coming out of the sheriff's budget, we want to make sure that everybody understands why that budget is fluctuating like it is because of the money that's being spent, or money that is being reimbursed back, I guess. No, it's the money being spent out of that budget to pay for the PPE and stuff like that.
Right.
So...
And you'll be working with, with the treasurer's office to make sure the transfers are made back into your budget?
That, that has been discussed and, uh, with Patty, and also on the voucher itself, it will, uh, state that this is a grant, needs to be taken care of, the money needs to go back.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Just to give that clarification, because there was some confusion when I tried to explain it last time, so we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Got anything else?
You have any questions for me?
No, thanks, Will, I don't, I don't, you know, I didn't, I understood this to work just as active way that we had talked about earlier, so...
It's like 113,000 and change that Bill and I applied for.
Right.
And 99% of it's gonna be used for PPE. Uh, right now, I've already placed a order today for 40,000 of the Spark money, and we'll, right at 20,000 for the, um, um, equipment to be used in the shelters, and it's all mobile, mobile equipment.
Correct.
So it can be moved wherever, and I placed that order as well. Matter of fact, I did that yesterday.
So is this sanitation equipment?
No, no, you weren't, I'm sorry, you weren't here.
Yeah, he was, he was off to Oregon.
Yeah, but he, is this on?
If the red, red light is on?
Red's on, it's on, okay, yeah, Shane told me to speak over here. Uh, the, the items that we're talking about are cots, blankets, hygiene kits, and they all come in a, what they call a 25-man pack, and it's on a cart that's enclosed, and it's portable. We have a trailer right now that's enclosed, that's hooked to our, uh, mobile EOC unit, you've seen it, been out back a couple times, that, these items, what I've ordered is 150-man kits, okay, they're 25 per, okay? So, and those items will be delivered here, and we'll put those carts right onto the trailer, and, and of course, they'll be secured and kept, it, everything is kept out there, just like the light tower and all that stuff, out at, uh, Road and Bridge, okay? Everything's plugged in and, and functioning. But that's, that's, it, it's for buck run, right now, we have a very small amount of, of those type items that buck run, cots, blankets, hygiene kits, so on and so forth, everything to support a shelter. But if we were to have, God forbid, an outbreak that we needed to establish a shelter someplace else, you know, within the county, we would be able to mobilize and move there with these units, these particular items, uh, with this trailer and the truck, of course, and take them there and establish that. So that's what that's for. The other portion naturally is, is to keep supplementing and keep applying items to the PPE that I have already warehoused over here in the jail, okay, which I gotta get to right now, because EMS placed a nice big order this morning with me, so I'll be putting that together to take to them.
And I, I will say that I did have a, a conversation with Will on, on what he was doing, uh, with the, the emergency, uh, cots and...
Right.
And everything that went around along with this, and, and I know that he, uh, he actually, uh, passed his request through Monica at Green Bush to make sure that it was in line with the Sparks grant application.
Yeah, yep, yep. Had that conversation back and forth, they, they allowed it, I mean, I didn't have to do anything, I think Lynn pretty much signed off on it, Monica thought it was a great idea.
So, the, it, it essentially would support, like, if there was a widespread outbreak, you would get...
Yeah.
Maybe tested and quarantined to a facility, and this facility could be, to be, to be determined later.
Yeah.
So I, well, what I'd, what I'd like to do is, once you get that, uh, request together and then ready to go, at least bring it to, or have me sign it, or one of you all sign it.
What's that now?
So I would move to let one of these commissioners sign the voucher.
The, for?
For, for the purchase.
Spending more than $2,500.
For the purchase.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, so you...
So maybe we allow...
I second that.
A commissioner to sign the voucher when it's considered.
Okay, the PPE order that I placed this morning is on a net 30, okay? Their warehouse is in Illinois, but their, their, uh, facility is in, is in California. Uh, and the, the, um, shelter equipment, their location is in Charleston, South Carolina, and they have been, and, and it's the same thing, net 30, okay, or sooner if possible, uh, both reputable companies, the one is a veteran-owned, uh, facility, the one in California. Um, and with being net 30, the only, the only problem, and this is something that is being witnessed nationwide, and that is the, the, the amount of PPE that's available to be purchased is getting thinner, okay? But other than that, that's all I have for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Thanks, Will.
Anybody have anything else?
Commissioners, I request a 15-minute executive session for the acquisition, the initial, I forgot the first words there, the initial, uh, this discussion for acquisition of real property, there you go. Took me a second, we don't use that one very often, we haven't used that one in a while.
So moved. Three commissioners and you?
I don't know, I need Mr. Walker too, please.
And who?
Shane Walker, Shane.
Okay. So moved. Here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We giving that in here?
Um, we probably want to just go into this room here, if we can spread out six feet, still talk.
Mic's off.
These two are, three.
Three.